All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'll, we'll get going with the September meeting of the Interstate 35 Board of Directors. We'll do a quick call of order. Nathan Gibson here.
Jessica Buckland here.
Melissa Keller here.
Monica Strange here.
Ross Baughman here.
All right, would you please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll review the I-35 mission statement and district priorities. The Interstate 35 Community School District exists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in an ever-changing society. Our district priorities are to articulate and support a cohesive student-centered pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century, and operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. Next, we'll discuss and approve the agenda. Members of the board, you should have received the agenda and had time to review it. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Properly motioned to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we'll move on to the open forum. We have one speaker this evening. I'll read something real quick. The Interstate 35 Community School District Board of Education. This is different on the paper than what's on here. I'll read here. Those who wish to speak may sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speakers' participation is limited to five minutes per meeting. We ask that speakers remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. And this evening, we have one speaker that signed up. Ms. Karen Varley. Did I say that right? Varley. Varley, Karen Varley.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Karen Varley. I am running for the Iowa House to represent District 23, which includes Truro and all of Madison County, Vidir County, where I live, and then parts of Union Clark and Dallas. I'm so pleased that my four kids had the chance to graduate from public schools because they got a great foundation and they're on doing terrific things. I appreciate that that meant a lot of work from people like you on the school board, educators, bus drivers, custodians, cooks, everybody teaming up together to make Iowa schools so great. But I'm concerned that right now, our legislature and our governor are taking some actions that are harmful to our public schools and in particularly, the schools in our rural communities. For example, I understand that the salary hikes, while beneficial, had some unintended consequences. And as a legislator, I would pledge to listen to you to make sure that the laws that we are passing and the policies that we are setting are really what helps schools and students and communities. So I'm running to be a strong advocate for Iowa's public schools. You can find out more information about me and all my positions at KarenVarleyForIowa.com. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Karen. All right. Next on the agenda, we have the Student Representatives Report. Ross, welcome back, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. So currently, the marching band had a first show on the first home game and they sounded really good. And also, they got received a new drummer set from the New Virginia Masons. So huge thank you to them for their support. The dance team received a donation too, to purchase new jackets and outfits for the state dance competition. So huge thank you to the donators for that. And then tomorrow, the FFA has a CDE day, so it's like contests and stuff such as livestock judging, poultry judging, and soil judging. And then upcoming, we got homecoming on the 11th and the dance is the 12th. And the coronation will be on the 10th. And the senior homecoming court is Vanessa Holtz, Liliana Cummings, Olivia Phillips, Mia Greve, Cora Keller, Bodie Stanley, Brendan Goring, Keegan Strange, Corbin Maxwell, and Michael Up. And then the class attendance, for freshmen, we have Brooklyn Showers and Jaden McDonald. And then sophomores is Lucille Vanami, Lucas Balder. And then for juniors, we have Amy Blavitz and Porter Canoy. And then there's some upcoming career expiration days and events with that. There's a healthcare day coming up on the 19th of September. And then there are apprenticeships or apprentice programs and military representative programs coming up too. And that is the September 22nd. And there's also like many colleges that'll be there too, so kids can kind of get a grasp on what their interests are and stuff. Let's see. And then there's a Diesel slash Auto Day on the 27th of September. There's another Health Career Fair on the 1st of October. And then there's Women in Construction Day on October 8th. And there's an apprenticeship expo, the 16th through the 17th in October. And they had a really good turnout. They had 1,300 students last year, so it sounds like a really good program. And then there's STEM in manufacturing at Ramco Innovations on the 17th of October. So lots of career and apprenticeship events. And then to kind of highlight, for sports, Olivia Phillips finished first in their cross-country meet last week, so congratulations to her. Any questions, anybody?
Have dress-up days been announced for homecoming week?
Not yet, not that I know of anyway, so. Yep. Yep, so.
You mentioned the marching band. I know we got the new uniforms and everything this year. Or do you have any indication, I guess, for everyone to let them know about when the marching band's playing and, you know, different activities that they're engaged in, so people can go out and see that by chance?
Not currently, but I can get back to you next board meeting.
That'd be great.
I do know that this year, I think they're planning to be in state marching contest, which is I think October 19th. And then other than that, it'll be home games.
Home football games then? Okay.
For the career fairs, is there like a signup sheet where you guys can go by and sign up for it?
Yep, so we go and talk to Ms. Steinloggi about it. And, you know, you can kind of choose whatever you want to do and go on from there. And then she'll get you signed up and get your signup sheet and all that fun stuff, so. Any other questions?
No, sir, thank you. Good to have you back to the table, sir.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
All right. Next, we'll move on to, I believe, I lost my place here. The Road Runner celebrates success. I believe we have the elementary teachers presenting this evening. And one of the things we'll definitely work on is, we definitely wanted this to be more collaborative. We didn't have time to set things up, but I apologize that you guys are down there. We will fix this in the future.
All right, well, thank you for letting us share with you guys. We are representing the elementary building leadership team. And so we're each going to share a little bit of kind of what we do when we meet and what our role is as a team. So our role that we want to do with our school is to work together to guide and make strategic decisions that are, in essence, helping to make our school the best that it can be and to reach our goals. And every decision that we make and every conversation that we have, all, we try our very best to always tie back into the building and the district goals. So like all the things that we're doing, we tie back to that. And one of the things that we have been working on, especially at the beginning of the year, is we're looking back at the district goal of having that rigorous growth. So we have put together a couple of different sheets that we use to guide our decisions and our conversations while we are meeting. One of them is a data, student data sheet. So that one has, it's a spreadsheet that has all students from preschool up through sixth grade. And we put all of their data from, you know, FAST, STAR, ISAS, everything that we get on them throughout the year. And we have that in a color-coded spreadsheet that we look at. And then we kind of transferred that information over to percentages that we look at as a whole building. So we'll have, you know, all of the different kindergarten testing that they have, the early reading or the math data, and we put it into what percentages each class, each grade has, so that we can kind of break it down and look at, you know, where are we standing? How did we come in at the end of the year last year? How did we come in at the beginning of the year this year? It gives us some good places to have that conversation. So I don't know if you. Okay, so, yep, not fancy.
Oh, gosh. Last year, you can kind of see, you know, the depth of tracking with different measures that they're doing. And so their job is really the system, not the, it's echoing now, okay. Their job is the system, right, to make sure the system is healthy. And so that's their lens. They're not looking for individual students and that plan, that's a different team. So I'll let you keep talking.
So we met today for half a day and we did a lot of looking at this data, examining it. What are the implications? What are the next steps forward? So as a team, that was our, you know, kind of our big task today is how can we break that down into action steps? What things need looked at? What things do we need to have a plan for, whether it's this year, the next year or two, kind of continuing on? So the team's going to come up and just share some of those action steps that we're looking at.
So looking at that data sheet that you just saw, we, one of the first things we noticed is that over the summer, you can always expect some kind of a dip. And we noticed that it was, we labeled it as an aggressive summer dip this year. Looking at the data from fall of '23 to this fall, it was about a 16%, which is a little bit higher than what we've noticed in past trends. So we were thinking of brainstorming how we might, what may have played into that, and what steps can we do to be proactive in combating this in the future? So one of the things, and I'll kind of let my next friend get up here and talk a little bit more about it, is our fall testing window. So maybe giving students, one of the ideas we had was giving students just to kind of some time to get them into the swing of things, of the new school year, not hit the ground running and start testing that first full week. That may have something to do with it. We might need to just warm up a little bit more. And because of such a summer dip, now we're looking more at what are our plans for summer school? It looks as though we might need to restructure this and make it more for those intensive kids that need that extra support, given that new legislation now that if you're twice deficient, that you have that letter and that plan now that's coming, kind of like that contract, and kind of an extensive plan more so now. And so we really want to hit the ground running with this and really give them that support in the summer, which I can.
So in the past, summer school has looked different. After we had COVID and we came back after closure, one of the things we did was we instated a month of Ju-, or month of July. And the kids would come twice a week, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and it was elective. And any parent can send their child. And that's how we started in the, over the past few years since 2020. Now, we're looking at that thinking that most of the kids that came to that, I wouldn't say most, but many of the kids that came to that didn't really need that intensive. It was, I think, parents wanted to keep them sharp. But many of the kids that came weren't necessarily that targeted group. So what we're, and our intention is, is to revamp that. So we would be looking at a more intensive summer school that would be by invitation. And it would be Monday through Thursday for two weeks before school starts. And I think we looked at the last week of July to the first week of August. It would still be mornings, it would be half-days. We would monitor the students that we think would be most, that would benefit most from it throughout the year. And Mrs. Kroll and I are going to start making a list now, based on the information we have. And as students continue to progress and make rigorous growth, we can eliminate them if they aren't a good candidate. And then keep.
What?
All right. So basically, we're going to keep track of them. And then once we get to May, we'll know who is a good candidate or in trouble.
We are also working on making sure that our kids are coming in with good math skills as well. That, kind of the same thing, they're coming back with a dip. So we are working on getting interventions for all grade levels, K through six, and making sure that they're fact-fluency, that we're doing those, getting those down pat, and just getting those interventions for those skills that they're kind of missing throughout the year. So we're really hitting that hard this year already. I've already talked to a bunch of them already this, today. So we're getting the foundation laid for getting those interventions going. Thanks.
A couple of other topics we talked about was comprehension. We focus a lot on fluency and comprehension is kind of another piece that we need to eventually dive into with the lower grades touching up on and making a main focus for foundational skills. Right now, we think it's best to focus on sixth grade right now to kind of pilot that out and then hopefully in the future, the rest of the grades touching on those as well. Another topic we brought up today was fifth grade science ISASP data. With talking about the other areas quite often with math and reading, science kind of gets overlooked. So I will be taking a look at the last three years ISASP data to kind of see where some deficiencies are and to kind of further boost some classroom engagement and lessons and units as well. But then hopefully to determine the priorities and implementations for rigorous growth, so.
I will just round that off real quick in saying, I think it's important to note that there aren't, our system is very strong and it's growing every year. So not to think that we're, you know, extremely deficient, which our dip was, you know, a little aggressive. But these ladies are putting in hard work to make sure that we continue. Like, our goal is not to just be adequate, our goal is to be the best. And to do that, we put in a lot of time and effort to get there. So I do want to say we're in a good way and this team particularly, their job is to monitor the health of our system and how we want to grow that over time. And so they're doing an excellent job. And they're just one team of many teams that have a particular role about how our system functions. And I don't know, what are you going to share about your, okay. And I'll let her finish off with the shebang, okay.
So I get to, and on a really fun note, which I'm excited about, and I also get to head this up, which I haven't decided if I've been like that excited about that yet or if this is going to be a huge undertaking. But on top of all our data-driven conversations, we also get the opportunity to come up with some really wild ideas. And do I have one for you today? So we, like you said, want to make our school the best school and we want to do some unique fun stuff to get kids excited about learning, as always. So we're in the very beginning stages of this. This is kind of our talk this year and we're rolling. But we were creating this outside-the-box idea, so here it is. We, and if you, I'm an 80s baby, so Reading Rainbow, anybody? Okay, LeVar Burton, yes, okay, I won't sing, but here we go. This is kind of the brainchild of it. We are thinking of getting a bus that we will transform into the, what we have called the I-35 reading route. So this will be a decked-out, fun, no-longer-working bus, non-functioning bus, cannot drive away with. So we would totally revamp the inside, or it may already be revamped. Again, these are beginning stages. Make it into kind of a book nook kind of thing. Picture bookshelves, benches, a fun place to sit and read. Even along the outside, it would be protected from weather. It would have, you know, some security as far as not just getting to hop on the bus whenever you want and kind of be, kind of a central location. We were thinking playground or just kind of brainstorming ideas. But this is going to be a big project that we hope to hopefully start rolling out this year, work on it in the summer, and have it ready to go for next year. We've already kind of put a bug in the foundation's ear. So there's a few just different options and ideas. We're asking to see if anybody has a bus that they just, hey, you want to give to a good cause? We'll take a bus. So it, we'll be talking about it and I'm sure you'll be hearing about this more, so get excited.
I will follow that up with, their work is kind of laborious, right? It's not great to look at that data, especially you saw, there's a lot of reds on there. We have, call those ketchups and mustards and trying to get those pickles. And it's kind of a taxing deal. So I'm asking them to pick one wildly important, wild project a year to kind of help balance the heavy with the light. So we did, we have a whole list of wild ideas, just so you know. There's not just one, there's a whole list. But they allowed the staff to vote on the one that the staff wanted and that's how we get to Reading Rainbow meets a school bus on our playground. So more to come on that, but just wanted to highlight some of these ladies' work and the progress that they're making to make our system the best it can be. So with that.
So first off, thank you. And your excitement's infectious, it's just amazing, so thank you. I thoroughly enjoyed each one of that. I'll start with my peers. Do you guys have any questions or comments?
Well, first off, Sam, I'm really hoping that you're going to sing the song then, "On the Bus." Like, I'm just putting it out, I'm sorry, ladies. No, thank you, all good stuff, very exciting. I know my kiddos are definitely ones that take a dip. We work on it, you know, we fight on it. But I'm curious to know with the, you're looking at all this stuff and you're classifying them and then kind of marking them, if, you know, they are worrisome. Are the parents going to be told that maybe their kid is marked, you know, so that they can help? Like, I know if it was mine, I'd want to know, like, okay, what do I need to do for reading or math at home?
I'll do this part since they didn't build a script for this. So this team does not dig into individual student data. They're looking at the system holistically. So our BAT team, our, I don't even remember what BAT stands for. There we go. Building Assistance Team. So we have two teams that deal with intervention needs. We have PBIS and they deal with the behavior intervention needs. And we have BAT, which deals with the academic intervention needs. And so today, what occurred with these two teams is BLT, these people, met in the morning and looked at the system. And then BAT took the afternoon, so they split subs. You with me? So that team met in the morning, that team met in the afternoon, and BAT met in the afternoon. And their job is to kind of nitpick the individual. They're looking into the weeds of those things. And I think as we get going here, and I don't know what all Mr. Grandin's going to address with this at the board level, but the state did pass some changes to how schools need to address kind of those deficient scores. And so students that are persistently below benchmark have a new process. So law in 2014 was we had to give a letter and a letter and fill out a contract. And those things kind of just, you know, were things that were, became hoops to jump through over time and didn't feel, didn't set the right tone with families either. Now the state has brought about, and we don't have to implement yet, but I just thought it's time to just, let's put it all together and make it work. So now students that are consistently below benchmark, they will be, they have to be placed on a reading intervention plan, which is a formal breathing, living document that lives forever until they kind of overcome that discrepancy and references. I don't remember the House file off the top of my head, but, so we have 47, this is TMI, I apologize, but we have 47 kids that meet that criteria right now. And so my job is to call and set up a meeting with each of those 47 kids' parents. And then at conferences, our reading interventionists, and I'm hoping the instructional coaches will collaborate with them and carry out those kind of collaborative meetings where those plans are filled in and acknowledged. And those are going to be some tough conversations, but yes, those kiddos that are identified in isolation through that BAT teamwork are, those families are going to be fully involved.
Is that for the ISASP scores or just all that you're looking at?
That one is particularly made about, for us, we state report on our CBMR, which is the words per minute.
Okay.
And I know that seems like a silly test.
Oh, okay, the words-per-minute one?
Yep, but the words-per-minute one kind of gives us that healthy diagnostic of if they've got the phonics skills to be able to be successful readers. And so that's where our measure is taken. And so the 47 kids have continually not met the grade level benchmark for that assessment. And of course, in first grade and kindergarten, we use the early reading because they don't do the words-per-minute yet.
Okay, so it's, all right, that makes more sense, thank you.
I love the bus idea, whoa. Okay, I'm like, yeah. Yeah, that brought back a lot of fun memories, so. And you guys are going to make some new fun memories, so. Parents can, we can relate to that, so that's awesome. I'm sure you'll get some dads that'll want to be involved in that and get some donations to help out with that because that's, yeah, I love that idea. I love the idea that you guys are all looking ahead to next year, you're being very intentional about summer school. I think that's really important to be intentional about the kids that really need it. And having that data is even more important to back that up, the need for it. And so pulling all of this together, is this, like, at a high level? Is this something that you would share maybe in the elementary newsletter? Not, you know, just at a high level, like what a bit of the process is?
Well, I don't think I have in the past, but that's certainly something. Even on my way here tonight, I was thinking it would be helpful for you to see, like, all these different teams and what their purpose is within the system, because it truly takes each group doing that. And, you know, frankly, today, that team met and BAT team, BLT met, BAT team met. After school, the Road Runner Way team met. And so there's, everybody's going, going, going all the time. So I probably do need to, you know, find a way to promote those things. And usually what happens with me is I'll get two or three of those things out. Or when we get closer to summer school and when they refine what they want to do with that, you know, those things will go out. So usually it's a piece at a time. I don't want to, you know, scare any parents off with, I already, Teresa says need to, you know, put less in my family update, so. But yes, I definitely could think about how to get that out there to help families know the direction and different things that are going on behind the scenes, for sure. Yep.
I think one of the things that's fascinating to me that I don't think people truly understand is they think teachers, y'all are just, you know, coming in and teaching, you know, the kids, which is what you do. However, what you just highlighted is this larger, truly executive operation that happens over the top of just going in and teaching, reading, write, you know, writing, science, math. And I think that's something somehow to, you know, communicate that, hey, this isn't just, hey, we got a book and the teacher's just teaching the book. No, it's more, we're teaching, we're measuring the outcome of that teaching, and then we're making strategic decisions to adjust and figure out how we may teach differently. And that may teach differently, may be different curriculum you use, or it may be different methods at which you teach it, right? You know, everything from teaching this subject in the morning, or teaching it in the afternoon, or whatever it may be. So I just, I don't think people understand that level of operation. I think you guys, because that's, you are teachers, this is above and beyond, you know. You're doing that extra. you know, you're, you're doing that, that extra leadership work, um, that, uh, I, I, it's tough, like, that, any business goes through that, right? They're, they're planning those strategic things two, three, that, three years out, like, they, um, for their business, and I don't think people understand that, that you guys do that as well. So thank you for all the extra time that you put in above and beyond just teaching our kids, but understanding, you know, what the plan of attack and the strategic, um, way to teach them in the best way, and doing really continuous improvement. In my world, we call it continuous improvement. People get Six Sigma certifications on this stuff that you guys are doing, so anyways, thank you. Thank you for all that you do. All right, we'll move on. We had the principals' reports. You guys had an opportunity to, to read those. Um, I don't know, I know Ms. Woods, you, you just talked with us.
I just stay here for any questions.
Did you have anything you wanted to, to bring up, and does the, the board have any questions?
Mine was short. I thought the board meeting was next Monday, so I apologize.
Can you explain a little bit about the fifth and sixth grade house system?
Yes, I can. Um, so, fifth and sixth grade joined our elementary system, um, and right away, kind of talking through what would make those teachers comfortable, you know, the PBIS system of, um, those extrinsic rewards, the store, the tickets felt a little bit, um, you know, primary for them and their students. And so we talked about, you know, what are alternatives? And I had mentioned, one time I went to this school, and middle school, in, um, you know, West Des Moines area, to look at a BD room, and they had four sections, and each section was this house, and they were calculating points somehow, and it was really cool and motivating. And so I kinda shared that experience, and they're like, ah, that sounds good. Um, and then one day, I was just, you know, scrolling on my phone, and, um, I found Ron Clark is like a noteworthy education name. Um, he run, he's on, he's in the private sector, so he's, you know, got lots of funds to do the cool stuff. But anyways, um, Ron Clark has built a house system, and it operates there, and so we were able to send Caitlin Grant and Janelle Gutsmer, too. They have a, a couple different trainings to train staff on how to do that. So those two went this summer, and then they came back, and we had a meeting of, I don't know, fifteen or so, um, people that interact with middle school student, or five, six students, and they kind of built from there. Um, and what they have, we chose to adopt the Ron Clark, um, houses that are already created, just because they've already got, you know, all the content that goes with them, and they have their own app, um, which, if you walk down our hallways now and get in that five, six range, you'll see some TVs up on the wall, um, that are showing who's earned points, so it's kind of like kids can see themselves up there when they earn points. And, and it, it's essentially is a PBIS measure, right? You have a team of kids that are working together, um, and, and one of the phrases they say is, you know, um, four, four houses, one team. So you're working as a house, you're trying to accomplish big things, and you, I like to win, so, you know, it's, it's competitive, but it's also like all of us working together. So kids can earn points, um, houses can earn points, like at lunch, you know, Ultrawismo might earn the point in the lunchroom or wherever. Um, and so there are parameters about how you earn a point, or what points can be given for, they can be given on the bus, any, anywhere. Um, and then every so often, they have kind of house ceremonies situated, where we'll see who's winning, and that house gets the, uh, field trip, and they go do cool stuff. So we haven't done that yet. We'll see, I'm sure it'll be a bit rickety, but, um, I think it'll be worth it in the long run, and I, it's, uh, I didn't, I didn't see, I don't wanna see lingering, but the TVs just got up and ru- running today, and so you'll see kids, you know, like, you know, like watching 'cause they update automatically as points are given, and so you see kids like lingering at the water fountain, like trying to check out who's got the points or whatever, so it was really cute today, but, yeah, it's, it's a PBIS system that's meant to be for those more mature audiences, but also make it a really cool thing. So hopefully what pans out. Yep.
Thank you.
What? Yeah. There's a lot of competition. You notice how I use Team Ultrawismo? She has signage up there to promote her house, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, um, I just wanted to, Mr. Beckel, I, I was reading through your, your report, and I'd love, I just love the idea of the student recognition, where you have the, the students of the, the month, and, and student honor roll, and, and, um, I, I think that's a fantastic way to, um, you know, continue to, to recognize publicly those kids that are making the smart choices, and making, um, uh, you know, uh, being good students, uh, being good athletes, whatever it may be, so, um, I, you know, I'd love for you to talk more, you don't have to, I didn't mean to make you get up, I just wanted to, you know, recognize that, um, that was great, and I think the, the one other thing that I saw, um, to highlight on your report, just so everyone knows and publicly watches it, come out to the Homecoming Parade, that is awesome, it's a great community event. Um, uh, there's, uh, it's just, I, I enjoy it every year, and I think sometimes it doesn't get the publicity and the promotion, uh, that, that it needs, but the, the entire community's out, you know, supporting, um, all of the, the different, uh, events and, and, and athletes, and then obviously, obviously, excuse me, the Homecoming Court, so I just wanted to publicly state, you know, uh, when I had read your, your thing, The Homecoming Parade, make sure everyone's aware of that, so.
Yeah, come check it out.
Yep.
Yeah, well, just going to the student recognition part, we wanna make a way for us to recognize students who are high-flying, achieving well, on top of students who are also like making gains. You know, maybe it's that kid who's had a rough couple months, and is starting to turn things around, so that's what the student honor roll thing is, is just recognize students who are doing better. So we wanna be able to recognize people who are just making improvements.
I appreciate the humor on that certificate.
Yeah, yeah, call me butter.
We, we had that on our, our warm-up shirts in basketball back in the day, so I was like, yes.
Any other questions about anything else on there?
I just had some comments. Um, thank you so much for the email that you sent out last week, um, to parents regarding the lunchroom expectations and just the manners that you had seen. I actually ran into a parent, um, two parents, and they said, oh my goodness, I saw the email, and I was like, oh my goodness, not again. And I said, did you read the rest of it? And they're like, yeah, that's what I'm saying. It was awesome, it was so nice, and, you know, just, um, encouraging for them to hear that. So I think that's, you know, parents are looking for that, too, and you complimented them, too, so giving them some, some credit in that is huge, um, as they deserve. Um, and, uh, so I just wanted to share that, and I appreciate the breakdown in the class numbers. Um, I had no idea, like, and I'm always wondering, oh, I wonder how many are in cross-country, and, you know, the actual number, so thank you for sharing that. Um, I love the student of the month, and just the positive momentum in your report overall, um, the core values. Um, question, where did those, did you create those? Did we create those? Did we approve those? I don't know where those came from, I'm just...
Just for some clarity, the core values are for the staff.
Okay.
Um, we had, um, kind of our pre-service days together, and we developed those together as a team. Spent a few, almost probably a couple hours in here, working on that, and just kind of hashing through, 'cause like, our, our team's been through quite a bit over the last few years, you know what I mean? And just trying to come back to a ground zero, like, okay, what are we gonna agree to? How can we agree to get along and move forward this year? And some great conversations happened, and I'm, I'm kind of feeling the, I shouldn't say I am, but you can definitely feel the, the outcome of that. It's been a more positive environment, and we're just, like you said, we're trying to keep that snowball, and trying to keep, get that, get that rolling, so it's been good so far.
Well, thank you for leading that, and I love some of the words in there, because they're, they're very strong emotional words, so that was encouraging to see that.
Yeah, it's kinda, it's kinda fun.
And I'm even more encouraged when you say that that was the staff that came up with that, so thank you for leading that.
It was kinda funny at the meeting, 'cause it, it spelled Ick when we first did, I was like, all right, we're gonna rearrange that, so it's Kick instead of Ick, but I don't know which is worse. But it, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beckel. All right. I know, um, Ms. Good had, had a report, I don't see her here. The, the only, I had one question on that, I just saw we had a couple resignations of, of, uh, some associates, and I saw we were posting the job, and we're looking for them. Um, i- is that to replace those two, or were we already short, and now we're even shorter? We're even shorter now, so, okay. Well, I'm, hopefully people watched the, the board meeting, we're definitely looking for, for some good, good associates, and love to have you onboard to join the team, so.
That was my question, too. Thank you for asking that.
All right. And then, um, Mr. Weber, I see, um, you had a report on the fall's activity. Any questions on that one?
I don't really have a question, but I just appreciate the, um, I know we had talked a little bit about the fitness center. Sorry, I'm trying to find my notes, I get too many things. The fitness plan update, so just, I appreciate that, just being outlined, um, because I know I've had some questions from, uh, patrons and community members that use the fitness center, um, so it's just, it's great to see that that's moving along, so appreciate that.
Yep. Okay. And I think there's no other questions, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I'll have Garrett come up first, um, but before Garrett starts, um, I had an opportunity to meet with the district admin team on Thursday, um, and told them at our meeting, um, but I would concur with what Mr. Beckel was saying. Um, I know I just started in July, but this has been a, a fantastic start to the school year, um, and just really appreciate you guys as a board, um, the admin team, um, and everything to the start of the year. It's been a fantastic year from, um, everybody welcoming me into the district, um, having great attitudes, and, and just having an awesome, awesome start to the year. So, um, thank you for the opportunity again, thank you to the staff, um, for doing what's best for kids, um, every day. So, um, with that said, Garrett, you wanna jump up and give us an update?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So yeah, quick update, I know science labs are open, everybody's using those, we have two outstanding items we're just waiting on, a new cord reel and a new, uh, cabinet door front, so not any pa- impacting the use of the space, but it's on our radar, we'll get that replaced as soon as we get those, um, pieces in, so. Out to the baseball, softball fields. Field grass is growing great. That was, um, fertilized and overseeded here last week, so that'll get another month of growth here before winter turns in, and should, uh, come back very well in the spring. Um, we have started field fencing, the outfield fencing, batting cages, that stuff's going up, backstop netting will be going up soon, if it's not already. You go out there, you can see the foul poles up, that adds some color to it out there. Um, and then field light pole bases are set, all the concrete's getting poured out there, sidewalks and everything, and then we've got our site grading, which is the final grading and seeding, um, scheduled for, um, the late here, late September, before that seeding window closes, so sitting right where we need to be for all that external seeding, um, grading work there. Concession stand building, um, it is up, roof is gonna go on this week. Um, we've got interior walls are topping out here soon, we'll get some plumbing and painting, the coiling doors at the concession stand opening will be going in in the next couple weeks, too, so it's really, really taking shape out there. If you haven't, um, driven by there, it, it changes every, every week, so we will get some, once the field fencing gets up, we'll get some more drone photos, you guys can share that, 'cause it's, um, right on track, right where we need it to be at this time of year, so. Budget-wise, we're still, um, on budget, contingency, we're still sitting at that two-eighty. Um, feel really comfortable with where that's at, I know we're, we are working through a couple of change, changes out there, um, don't have the documentation to bring to the board yet, but I'll, I'll bring that in next month, but minor changes, I'm still with two-hundred-and-eighty in contingency, where we're at with everything, feel very comfortable where, where we're at budget-wise on this project.
First off, I wanna say thank you. I know you've been coming in and keeping us updated, uh, every month, month by month, and, and I appreciate it, I'm not, not a construction guy, so being able to follow along where we're at and understanding, I appreciate that. I did have, uh, uh, I guess, one, one ask if I could, when we finished the roof that you talked about, can we like get a triple inspection on that, just to make sure that roof's good before? We've had a heck of a time with roof leaking here, so I don't know what it is with roofs, but, um, just, you know, just to make sure before we sign off on that, that that roof is good to go.
We'll make sure to highlight that one.
Yes, thank you. Any of the other members have any questions or feedback? Okay. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll have, uh, Rick Sealy from OPN come up and give us just a quick, or an update, and actually, maybe I shouldn't say quick. Um, we'll give an update on the facilities plan as a whole, um, just so that everybody sees where our current reality is, um, so we can move forward.
Perfect, thank you, Chad. Uh, Chad, can we, I'm gonna call an audible here, can we actually do the file that has, that was on the stick, so it should have thirty slides in it or so? As I was thinking about this, it might be better to do some of this in chronological order. Thank you, uh, I wanna just tell you, I'm Rick Sealy with OPN Architects. By the way, I have, uh, Ian back here as well, from OPN. Ian carries all the detail and day-to-day knowledge of the project, so he's here to keep me in line. What I want to do this evening is maybe at your request, or perhaps at Chad's, which is just maybe quickly go through the master planning process with you, to give you a little bit of background in case you don't carry some of that knowledge. In other words, how did we arrive at some of the priorities that were in the master plan? And I'll try to do that quickly, uh, for you all. I do also wanna mention one thing related to the master plan, you should all have a copy of it. Uh, we discovered, um, several weeks ago, that actually something went to print in that that is not correct, so there's an escalation table of costs that are in that that are not correct. So we do have new copies for you, if you would like one, um, that would be current and up-to-date, and, uh, take care of that situation for us.
Could we have that emailed possibly, or could you email it to us?
Yes, we can, we can certainly do that, too.
Thank you.
And, and we'll wanna make sure we get it posted for the public to see it as well, I assume.
So just as a reminder, we were hired to do really some master planning that talked about, or looked at, the needs for the district, and ultimately looked at costs, and that helped us develop a priority list of some things that we wanted to try to do. So, as you might imagine, needs and costs, and frankly, your funding streams don't always align, so that's the purpose of a master plan, it's basically to give you a roadmap, and any, uh, subsequent boards, a, a roadmap for how to work through, uh, the facilities and the needs for the district. So keep in mind, this is already, um, a couple years old, so when we did our, uh, input, this was in twenty-two, at two moments, um, and also currently, uh, at that time, it was incorporated input from students, staff, community members, uh, and really worked through how to create a consensus around what some of those priorities might be. So I'm gonna page through some of this pretty quickly. In your master plan, uh, you will see some of our observations that were made related to all of the facilities. This is not all-inclusive, there's more depth in the master plan, but I just wanna remind everybody, that's how we started to collect some information, that's through our own observations, that's through interviews, and frankly, that's through, um, needs assessment meetings with students and faculty, and ultimately culminated with, uh, community meetings. So we had two moments with the community, uh, we asked and invited, uh, open invitations to come in and go through a process with us. Uh, the first was on October twenty-fourth, and we actually didn't know whether that would be the single community meeting, or whether we would have a subsequent meeting, we chose to do a subsequent meeting, because we had a little bit of information from the first meeting that wasn't very conclusive in some respects. So this first meeting, you can get an idea of who was actually present. So community members, former students, uh, student, or parents of current students, faculty, were primarily the members that made up who we were speaking to, and who we collected some information from that evening. We go through a couple exercises, but which really float to the top, some things that everybody believes are important, the largest, um, words up here are some of the things that we heard maybe more repeatedly, um, with respect to needs or the desires of the community. Then we went into a series of questions, um, these are just a few highlights, uh, one on the left starts to show you that there was a great interest in really the outdoor athletic facilities. Some of the other things that ultimately had a great deal of discussion were daycare, the indoor athletic facilities, and obviously the high school classrooms. The pie chart on the right is where we start to see that there is a pretty equal interest with the projects that were under discussion. I should point out that there are three of those items in the pie chart which actually make up item number one on the left, so that's what, the reason you're starting to see that really the, the outdoor facilities were the primary focus. Uh, we wanted a little bit more information, um, based on some questions we had, so this is the start of the feedback related to our October twenty-sixth meeting. When we ask some questions in a different way, you start to see that we get a little bit better understanding of where the priorities ought to lie first. We asked about stadium preference... We asked about stadium preference, we asked about turf preference, which seemed to be of great interest to a number of folks that were in some of the discussions. Now I will tell you that those folks that made up the second meeting were similar in terms of the population. Again, there's more detail in your master plan if you're interested in that. One of the things I think that would be good to do would be to try to do this in a different way if you want more updated information, that would actually capture an audience from the folks that might be really interested in daycare and pre-K. I think the participants that we had in the room were probably not that constituency. So this may not have prioritized some of those things in maybe the moment we were in, in the most accurate way, just because we didn't have that audience there. Now there was a blanket invitation, those folks could have certainly attended, but we just didn't maybe get their participation, so that's one thing I would point out here. We looked at some other things related to what's important. And basically, you'll see the reaction here from our constituents or our members in the community where they wanted to do it right. We wanted to make sure that when we were making decisions and prioritizing some things, that it made some sense. I'm not going to go into too much detail, there's more information, again, in your master plan. So that led us to really starting to develop a number of items that we could consider. These were in no particular order of priority. We happen to think that the athletics obviously had the most interest, so they floated it to the top. But the others that are three through six, I think, could be reordered in any number of ways. So this represents the moment we were in in master planning. Ultimately, what got, what came to fruition was there was a portion of the facility, or the field building, which is labeled 2B up there in the center, that we obviously bid. We also deleted some parking lot that was to, that's to the west of CTE. So phase one in the master plan doesn't actually match phase one as we bid it. So I'll just make sure you all understand that. This was phase one as I, is this the current phase one? This is the master plan. So you can see that, yes, we would have moved, the concessions building is not illustrated up there, so we would have moved that into this master, or into phase one. Phase two then was doing the field building, and you can obviously see there were, there was a conversion of the existing field, additional parking, and a new stadium and track that was envisioned. And frankly, the, the cost of this was 11 and a half to 12 and a half million, and that was estimated at $20.23. In the master plan, there's actually an alternate that's illustrated that was basically putting a new stadium in place where the existing one is. And by the time we did that and considered all the phasing and the gymnastics we really have to do to implement it, it wasn't a whole lot cheaper than actually doing this and having more facilities for the community. I think it came in at like $11 million at that point. So there was a modest difference in the two approaches just based on some of the gymnastics necessary to do a renovation. There were other things in the master plan like turf versus natural grass that we went through. We looked at just repairing the existing stadium and what might, what might that cost, et cetera. And then we, we obviously had the other components of the master plan, the indoor work. So we started to present then some of the detail that was within any one of these particular efforts or phases. I'm not going to get into a whole lot of this right now because I can probably update you better with the next short deck that we, that we have. We had a daycare component, it was detached, it was attached, it moved around a little bit. But ultimately, it was something that was really probably contingent upon a large grant that potentially was available at that point. It was something that I believe the community has a desire to do, and there's probably a great need in our community to do this. If we do it, you know, it can be done in phases, which is the red line that we had illustrated here. And that's one of the things that'll be up for discussion briefly tonight. So this is the overview of the master plan again, and that sort of concluded our update November of last year for everybody. So if you have questions around that, great, bring them forward. What I'd like to do, though, is switch to a short deck that we provided you as a pre-read. I think you've had a chance to see this, but I've got a little more information for you based on some questions that came to us. So recently, we were asked, can we revisit a couple things in the master plan? So you've seen the overview of how we got here, but the next questions were, are we able to do something more with the field building? Potentially add another phase or break that down into more phases? And is this the second deck, Chad, or is it still the first one? Okay, perfect. Let's see if it's going to advance for me. Okay, so this will give you an update as to where we are. So you can see the original phases from the master plan. You can see phase one is all work in progress, the field building, or a portion of the field building is work in progress. And we've got the high school academic renovations that are for all intents and purposes complete. So if we look at the concessions building, there was a question of can we add another phase or put in place the restrooms and what might that cost? That's not a cost that we had broken apart in the master plan for you, but DCI has helped us with some recost on this at this point. So they, they updated their cost estimates to 2003. And if we make the assumption that we are going to build this in second quarter of 2026, just as a target, we've added an 8% escalation to get from 23, excuse me, $24 up into $26.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question real quick? This is, the, the restrooms that we already approved to redo, or is there somebody asking for more restrooms?
Thank you, I can jump ahead pretty quickly, so thank you. The area in white is what is actually being built right now. So the other two areas in blue and red, we had slated for phase two, based on how we adjusted the first bid. The question to us was, can we break that down further and potentially consider phase two just being the restrooms? And then later, doing the field house itself, which is in red.
And, and who asked, I guess, for that? Is that something you and the administration's asking for? Okay.
Yeah, just to understand sort of what that looks like. So what we had to start with was basically 2023 numbers. We refreshed all those numbers, and now to get this to an assumption that we would build it in the second quarter of '26, we've added about 8% escalation, which equates to about 5 and 1/3% annually. That's heavy, probably, or we hope, because we want those numbers to be conservative.
And I am so sorry, you're going to have to walk me through this. 8% escalation, like this isn't stuff that...
Okay, so let's assume that we've got the master plan numbers, the dollars for construction cost. So those are already out of date. So to get it to today's dollars, we've made an adjustment on exactly what was in the master plan to get us to that.
So handling inflation.
Right, exactly. Then, in addition to that, the 8% escalation that I'm talking about is actually us trying to project what the inflation might be by the time we get to second quarter in '26. So our assumption is that total over six quarters will be 8%. Okay, so I'm just offering that as an assumption for you and how we got to some numbers for you. Makes sense? Okay, perfect, and please stop me again if I'm, if I'm running ahead of you all here. So if we look at this plan and we look at some of those breakouts, what I think we can say at this point is if we wanted to do the area in blue and we wanted to assume what its construction cost would be in '26, we would tell you it's about $900,000. Okay? If we wanted to do the area in red as well, just the area in red would be an additional $2.9 million. And that's, it's different in size, it's different in height, it's different in some of the aspects of durability than some of the other areas up there, but that's how we, that's what we would project, that the assumptions we had in the master plan, what those would be in '26.
And, and I apologize, I want to be able to focus on this, but there's other, I guess, bigger questions around my head that I just want to ask, and then we can table them. So I, I thought, or at least I had requested the opportunity to completely, you know, I wouldn't say start at scratch by any means, but have a facility discussion as a board to figure out if these things are still the priority we think we, we should work on, right? Before we start just continuing to execute on the existing plan. So are we going to have, like you started off at the beginning, and I saw that thing. My question is, how many farmers did you have in that meeting? How many farmers have we go out and reached to, to get that right? And, and I don't think we did, the taxpayer's paying for this. So I want to get us back on this track. I just want to, are we going to have that opportunity to, you know, come back and decide if these things are? I didn't know we were going right into discussing what the next thing is, so.
So, so all this is, is the current reality, right? So this is just Rick showing us what the current reality is. And if we have the plan that was laid out in, in your book, and, and that's chunked out, this is what it would look like. Rick's not saying this is your next step and this is what you do. I'm not saying this is what we do next step. We take this information, we've given this to the board, so you guys can stew on this, and then we'll meet and bring that committee together. We're not ma, I'm not making any decision. I'm not asking you guys to make any decision, it's just for information. But I think it's important to understand the current reality. What work's been done, work completed, and what work has been done within the plan already? What could we chunk out that's there, so we have everything in front of us? And then we make decisions moving forward.
Thank you, and I think that makes sense. I just felt like we're already discussing what the next thing was, and I, I, not that I want to take a pause, but I want to go back and, and have the discussion on, you know, other things that have been brought up. We, you know, we, we lost a lot of stuff when we built those fields, and they're great. But, you know, our FFA was left without fundraising, you know, the soccer, things like that, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the perspective, and let me just address that for just a minute. Chad's exactly right, we're not suggesting that these are the next priorities. We were trying to put in place some building blocks to give you just an understanding of how the data in the master plan actually needs to be updated as we move forward. There were a couple that were suggested as, let's get these in our back pocket so we can be ready to talk about them if they do in fact become a priority. Let's just take a step back, this information's two years old. I would suggest to you, if you want to try to reprioritize this, we can certainly go through exercises to do it. I would strongly recommend that that includes the community, the faculty, the students. So we need to go through that process again, and we might want to tweak it a little bit to make sure that we are getting the other constituency that may have been perhaps low or absent in the previous master plan. We would love to do that with you, we just wanted to set the table today. Okay, all right.
And I, I think it would be helpful, too, for, for the board and the community to know, you know, what's, what's been approved, and maybe we just need to have that recapped. I know you guys have met with Piper, you know, what has been approved? What, what funding we have approved and which phase? I don't know if there's, if we just need to recap that again, that's always helpful coming back to that. What has already been, you know, allocated to this phase as far as funding and all of that? I think that would be helpful because I don't want to give the perception that we can just stop phase two or phase three if we have some funding that we've already approved in place. I don't think we've approved any funding for two, three, or four. But I think just recapping phase one, okay, here's what we've, here's what that includes. I don't know, I don't know what that looks like, but just want to mention that.
Thank you.
Chad, go back to maybe slide two for me for just a second to maybe address Melissa's comment. So nothing beyond what's being constructed today has been approved. We've identified costs for them, those costs are out of date, and we can certainly reprioritize anything. All this is, is a roadmap, and we can change the direction. We want to go anywhere on the journey, we just have the, the map in front of us to make those decisions. So basically, everything that's up there in 1A and a portion of that box called 2B is being done now. Yeah, the rest can be done later, and you can certainly choose to reprioritize that with your own or community decisions along the way. Okay, so I think we're done with maybe the concession stand, unless you've got some questions around that. The other thing that I just want to remind you of is that the work in the high school that we've done is the, is basically the biology, the science labs, the chemistry labs, and then the additional air conditioning that we've put in place for those areas. None of those other things up there related to at-risk or the family consumer science is, is even on the, it could be in the priority list, but it's not been allocated for, and it's not something we're planning to, to do, or it's not been approved, is probably the other way to say that. The last component that we were asked about was really the daycare. So if we build the daycare, can we do it in phases? Absolutely, that's one of the pieces that was in the master plan. The first piece that we would do is really the left side up here. So you'd build five classrooms, you'd build all the building systems in the core of the building, and you'd build the conference area. That's the most expensive portion of the building. So roughly, these are the same cost, right to left. You're just building the left side, and it's going to, it's going to cost you, we estimate the left side would be about $7 million. And to do the next phase, which would be the right side, would be about $8.5 million. Again, all assuming $20.26. Obviously, the longer it takes, you would expect those costs to rise. Now I want to do one other thing, and this is something that we'll just have to make sure we remind each other of as we go. The costs that I'm speaking to you about, these updates, are construction costs, construction. That is the cost that you would typically see from the contractor on bid day. The master plan looks at that cost plus soft costs. And that cost is project costs. So when you're thinking about the master plan, it's the construction cost, the cost at bid day, plus what we need as architects to do the work for you. So it's any of the fees that are associated with that. So they're not quite apples to apples. As we get more forward in terms of understanding how we might reprioritize some things, we can make sure that we've got an apples to apples comparison. But we do need to understand the difference between project and construction cost. Okay? All right, that, I think, is the last slide we had. We're, I'm glad, by the way, to come down and catch Mr. Hutton up, if you need that as well. And if you want to, some discussions on, okay, well, how would we get the next set of input? And what would we do to start that process, we're glad to help you there, too. Okay?
Thank you. Did you have anything else right here, superintendent? All right. Oh, you have this, did you say, oh, the fitness?
So we have, going along the lines with Brighton's update with updating the fitness room, we have two treadmills. We'll take our worst two treadmills and sell those on GovDeals. And the value of those treadmills are less than $5,000. So I don't necessarily need board approval for that, I'm just letting, informing you of that. And that policy is attached there for you to take a look at. But we do, we will post on GovDeals, it'll be kind of like, it's kind of like an auction site where they can, people can place a bid and come and pick it up, whatever, whoever wins the highest bid.
And the, the funds raised from that will that go back to the fitness center to buy additional equipment and things like that? Okay. Thank you. All right, next we have discuss and approve the consent items. You guys should have received the past meeting minutes, the monthly bills and financial statements, and the resignation and contracts for, there were no new hires, no contract modifications. And then resignations, we had Amber Jones, Special Education Associate, and Emily McKenzie, Special Education Associate. Is there any discussion on the consent items? I, I will say, I noticed we have a little bit different report format for the financials this time. And, you know, when you first read them, it's, it's a bit overwhelming, but I like the structure and the layout. Once you sit down and read it... Once you sit down and read it, and, and, you know, it, it allows you to really see where our, you know, inputs are and our, you know, outputs, and I might have to spend some time with you and have you, you teach me, but I, I really like that, and thank you for putting the, the time into that, so.
It just breaks it down more into fund balances versus what's sitting in our bank accounts, because yes, that money is sitting in the bank accounts, but here's the specific funds that it belongs to, so you can try to see where we're sitting. And final June, July, August, and then September will be given to you in October, now that the annual report's done. So, these all be coming again with actual, real numbers, not numbers that change every day.
I, I, I did have, and this is just maybe something you can throw on, it made, made me think about when I was looking at the, the different funds and the general funds. I believe at some point in time, we need to start thinking about like early retirement stuff and all of that stuff, so I didn't know if you've got that on your radar, I just, okay, perfect, okay. All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, so no discussion, I'll entertain a motion on the consent items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
I have a motion to approve the consent items, so I have a second?
I will second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next we have action agenda, approve of the FFA National Convention trip. Normally, we have the FFA here to talk about that, I was excited, so they couldn't make it, yeah. Well, I, I'm gonna give a shout out, so this, I don't know if you guys saw the school posted about this, this is gonna be a pretty, pretty special convention, because one of our, our staff, our FFA advisor and ag teacher, is receiving her American FFA degree at the National Convention this year, which is like a huge, absolutely huge accomplishment. I think only like one percent of people in FFA ever achieve that, that milestone, so I'm, I'm pretty ecstatic that, that our, our own teacher here has achieved that, that huge milestone, so, and I think with the experience of her going through that journey, it's going to, you know, be able to help her mentor and, and coach other kids, and I'm just excited about, you know, potentially more and more American FFA degrees coming out of Interstate 35, so. All right. There's no further discussion on the approval of the FFA National Convention trip, I will entertain a motion.
I will motion to approve the FFA National Convention trip.
I have a motion to approve the trip, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next we have the handbook updates. This is a follow-up from, I believe, the two board meetings ago, where it was presented the plan to update the handbook to allow for grading policies. I'll just leave it at that as summarized, I think we all discussed it. Is there any discussion on that topic?
Chad, in regards to, I think it's page thirty-four, with the grading practices, it talks about the classwork that's being graded at twenty percent. It notes in there that it'll be scored on a four-point scale rubric for each assignment. Can we just clarify, is that the teachers having to make rubrics for every assignment? Or is this just kind of a generalized, easy-to-go-by kind of rubric for, you know, the general classroom? Like, are we making the progress and stuff?
Mr. Beckel and his team will work on just a general rubric for homework, so that they don't have to create individual rubrics for each assignment.
Thank you, much appreciated, that was my concern, I, I know as the board, we did not want to create any more work, so making a rubric for each one sounded awful, so thank you for, for that.
All right, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the handbook updates.
I will make a motion to approve the handbook updates.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next we have an update on the district goals and actions. I think previously, we were able to see the first district goal, and we kind of discussed that, and Mr. Grandin was gonna go back with the administration, and the, really the update on this one is the, the second district goal, so I don't know if you want to talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, this, this district goal really is, is, I mean, they're both ultimately the board goals, right? But I think this, this district goal is more, more pertaining to, I think, the work that April and I do in the business office, as far as making sure the resources, and when you're, when you're talking about tax levy and, and things like that, and maintaining a balanced budget. So, we were able to spend some time developing that in conversations with, with some of you, also making sure that, that transparency from a district standpoint is out there, and, and that's important as well, so that's included within goal number two as well. So, I think, I feel comfortable with kind of where we landed on goal two, but ultimately, like I said, it's, it's the board goal, but these goals guide the work that our building principals do and lead with, with their buildings as well. So, the intent is, once they're approved, is, is to work with Teresa and, and create some better-looking flyers and things like that, that we can put around the building and, and things like that, to really point these, these goals out and, and show what we're about, so, once, once they're approved, we can start that work then too, so.
So, you know, first off, thank you for, for your work on this. I know when we were sitting in our working session that we had with IASB, we, we all had the opportunity to kind of put sticky notes up, and I, I think, you know, for me, we talked about this first goal in there, in that working session, but for me, I really felt was missing was the stuff you added on the, the second goal, so I, I appreciate your, your work on that. I, I will say, and I was trying as I was reading through this, it, it begins to touch on things, and, and I'm definitely supportive of this, right? I think it begins to touch on the things that, that, you know, I'm, I'm passionate about, and I think a lot of parents in the community are passionate about, potentially would like to see things a little bit stronger, and I was actually trying to figure out an example to give you, and I found it in the, the best place ever, and I'm trying to find it here, it's actually in our handbook. If you go to the staff handbook, and I'm, I'm gonna read this out and others can, can look at it, but as you go through, I think it's page, I can't even tell what page this is, page eleven, it, it's got kind of some, I, I would almost call them core values here, and I'm gonna read the two that, that kind of jumped out to me is, you know, "School personnel should promote school-community communication and work with the parents for, for the benefit of the students." And, you know, that, that right there in our own, you know, handbook, that, that I just kind of feel, you know, hits, hits home for me, and, and what I was, you know, really wanting to see were some, you know, action items, because those were action items you had underneath there, that, that, you know, are associated with that, that particular bullet, and I, I think we're there, like, there's some things you added, but it didn't, for me, it just didn't quite get it there, and I, I just throw out examples, you know, maybe some PLC stuff that, that, you know, helps with parent communications, because I know they struggle with parents not getting engaged, right? And, and how, what are some different things? So, I'm not asking for any change at all, I think this is fantastic, I like the direction we're heading, but I, I, and I, I was happy to find this actually, as I was reading through our, our handbook, because I think that is, you know, very key and, and central to, to who we are, and, you know, ensuring that our, our goals, you know, kind of mimic, how, how do we achieve this, how do we do better at this? And, and I think most importantly, make sure this is front and center of who we are as a school district, so.
Yeah, I think something that was important to me during that work session was just being good stewards of the finances, that we, that we have to just keep an eye on and balance and budget and all of that, so I really appreciate all of the work that you two have done, because this really outlines, you know, exactly how we're gonna do this, very, very detailed, it's not an easy job, so I appreciate this, and I think this will be helpful for the community too, to see just, you know, we're gonna give you a detailed budget, at any time, if, if it's something that we want to talk about, where it ties into enrollment or funding, you know, we're putting it out there that these are our goals, so we're gonna be able to show them that at any time that they ask, so I just think that's really important to, and then identify and prioritize. I just, I really just think this just sets us apart for the future and holds us accountable too as a district, so I appreciate all of the work that you guys are doing to put this together.
I just wanted to make sure my peers didn't have anything, I want to double down also on what Melissa said. I, I really liked, you know, I, I saw a post recently of a community member who went grocery shopping and talked about, you know, how much it costs for, for milk and, and bread and everything these days, and I, I think it's important for us to be judicious with the, the tax dollars, and, and, you know, like you have on 2E, implement cost-saving measures where possible. I think it's really important for us to recognize that everybody unfortunately has happened to, to make difficult decisions, get a half gallon of milk instead of a full gallon of milk, you know? I, myself, I'm dealing with, you know, with some of those decisions sometimes, and I think the school, you know, should, should definitely be aware of that, so maintaining the balanced budget and the tax levy and making sure that we're not, we're not impacting the, the, the community members any more than we absolutely have to, so thank you for that.
And it's also encouraging to hear, you know, earlier, Mrs. Woods, you know, your team just using a lot of these words already, so I can tell that, you know, it's being used around the district already, so that's really rigorous, I think I heard three different people say that, so the more you say it, the more, you know, the more it is embedded into your mind, so, and, so that's, that's exciting to see, that even though we're still going through building these goals out, you guys are already on the ground, running and getting this done, so, so thank you for not waiting on us to go through, and yep, 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 but just down the road, because I think it's, you can see that there's excitement, and, and I think that, you know, staff wanted this, leadership wanted this, parents wanted this, community wanted this, so this is just really outlining and just, it just feels like a new, just breathing new life into the district, and you can get a sense of that, so thank you for, for everyone's hard work doing this and putting this together.
Is there any further discussion on the district goals and actions? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the district goals and actions.
It's been properly motioned to approve the district goals and actions, do we have a second?
I will second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next we have the street march, uh, street smart drivers education, and I am excitedly nervous that I will get to participate in this for my third and final time this year, so.
It's a saving.
Yeah. So, I don't know if you got, get an opportunity to read through it, but the fee was three-hundred-and-eighty dollars, I guess that's per student, and we have an increase of twenty dollars to four-hundred dollars per, per student?
For a three-year term.
For a three-year term, okay. All right. Any discussion on the street smart drivers education contract? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I will motion to pass the street smart driver education contract.
It's been properly motioned to approve the street smart drivers education contract, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next we have the approval of the secondary advisory curriculum. This is a three-year contract with School Connect for eighty-five hundred dollars for the secondary advisory instruction. Yep, and I have a few questions, I don't know where Mr. Beckel went, so.
We had to trade places with.
Okay. Yeah. So, I will say, spent a lot of time over the last few days, kind of going through, through this, you know, curriculum and, and content, as much as I, I could, right? I don't have a license of this thing, so I couldn't go down, you know, too, too deep in seeing what the actual, you know, content is that, that was teaching. I, I will say, the, nothing looked, you know, concerning at all. Module five did concern me a little bit, as it talked about the social empathy and inclusion. What I did see, and through the videos and what they had on their, the website, didn't, you know, raise anything of, of concern, but the question I, I had is, are, are we as an administration, like, really diving into that content and curriculum and reviewing it and ensuring, you know, that, that there, there isn't anything in the actual instructions or content that are being, you know, given to our students that are of objective, I guess, content? I guess that's my question, are we really digging into it and looking at it?
Yeah, so, and this curriculum we've actually had in the past, it didn't get used last year, but it's been used, it's, it didn't get renewed last year, but it's been used previous. So, Natasha and Adam dug into it with their, with the secondary team, and I asked Adam to get consensus with the team, with all of the secondary team, that this is a direction that they wanted to go during, for advisory, because they currently don't have anything to guide that, that time and that work, and they felt this curriculum would be able to use that to guide, guide their work that they're doing during advisory. I wish Adam was here, he can, I mean, he spent more time with it than I did, but him and, he and Natasha spent time with their teachers to, to dig into it.
Okay. And, and like I said, I didn't, I didn't see anything on, on the surface, I just, you know, asked that you continue to work with your administration, these, the, you know, the, the SEO content's important, and, and I agree that we need to, to help, you know, our, our students and, and our students understand and, and deal with emotions properly and things like that. We just have to make sure it doesn't, you know, begin to prioritize, you know, feelings over truth or undermine parental authority, you know, your feelings are important, but that, you know, they're not, they're not more important than your parental authority, so those types of things, I just want to make sure we're looking into in our, our content, making sure it's not in there, so.
And we, I mean, that, if the concern is module five, right, there's time that we can dig into that further, and if there's a situation that we can pull that module out, we, we can certainly do that, so if you'd like, I can direct Adam and his team to dig into that, and, and we can spend time with that before they instruct that portion, so there's time before that if needed.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that'd be my only ask, is just, you know, take the time to dig into that, that module, and make sure it's, you know, kind of meeting the, the values and the objectives that, that we want it to, but not going further than that, so. Okay, that's all I had, is there any further discussion on that one?
No, I think you kind of summed it up, I looked at it too, and that was also kind of a, not a red flag, but a, what does that include? Because, you know, you want to just sure we're staying, you know, with the academic and what's gonna help the kids, and not cross that line of stuff that should be dealt with at home. So, I, I think outside of that and, and reviews and everything, I looked up for it, it, it didn't see anything come up, so that was ensuring. And some of the skills, I think, are, even our seniors and stuff can really benefit for kind of planning outside next steps and stuff like that, so I, I, what I could see, like I said, on the surface, because we can't delve too deep, seemed to be as though it could be beneficial for sure, and I know advisory time is a hard time to fill, so anything to kind of get their minds rolling a little bit is, is good, so.
I know I'm not supposed to talk, but can you clarify what's concerning about the inclusion, please?
Yeah, I, I apologize, I can't respond. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll ma- excuse me. I'll motion to approve the secondary advisory curriculum.
It's been properly motioned to approve the secondary advisory curriculum, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded, all those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next we have the time, time cook plus TC, or clock, thank you, thank you. Time clock plus TPC three-year agreement. Is this our timekeeping system, I'm guessing?
Yes, our hourly staff use this system to clock in and out before they've only done one-year agreements. We still will only pay one year at a time, but this gives us about a four and a half percent discount doing a three-year agreement. I don't foresee us upgrading to a more expensive program, so this is, this works for what we need it to.
Thank you, April, is there a discussion?
Does this come out of the general funds?
It can come out of general, or it can come out of PEP or SAVE, either way. So, it just, it depends on where our priorities are and where we're sitting, so.
All right, is there any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I will motion to pass the time clock plus TPC three-year agreement.
It's been properly motioned, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the approval of the tree bid for the baseball softball complex. I think Mr. Grandin talked to us a little bit about this last time, gave us ahead that, that this was coming, it was included in the project cost, but it was also noted that this would be something we, we would cover. First off, I'll ask, is there any discussion from my peers? I did have something I wanted to remind you all of. Okay, so, this reminded me of back, it must've been March or February, I can't remember. We had a student come in and talk to us about, yeah, about the prairie grass. So, since we built the, the field up there, we, we took away the, the prairie grass. And it was Allison Oger, she came in and talked to us about the, about potentially, and I just wanna recap for everyone, potentially about right outside the library where, where that, that ditch is, is to replant it. And the Iowa DNR was gonna partner with us and everything, and I think we just kinda lost track of that. And anyways, I'll take a pause, did you have something?
Feedback directly for that. So, we work, so, as I mentioned at that time, the Madison County Conservation is our second-grade partner for service learning. And so, they're kinda waiting, and I, and I just said, I think the board's good, so I kinda gave your blessing. I don't know, I hope that's okay. But anyways, we talked about, and Mr. Beckel said he was good with it. They're working on making sure that would be very little or, or no cost to our school, but that the second graders would build and maintain the prairie there. So, so that is in production, I just wanted to address that. And then I also have note, Mr. Douglas's father, who worked here and was a part of our community, his mom has his memorial and wanted it to go to something, so he's actually given us $1,000 to build like a seating at the, at the prairie outside the library, so. Anyway, sorry.
No, that's, that's fantastic.
I just started doing it, so I kinda do that, I just do stuff, and Chad will learn that.
No, and, and I do remember, we were all in adamant agreement that we, you know, it was a great idea. I just had, forgot to follow up. So, one thing I would ask is if you, Ms. Woods or Mr. Grandin can follow up with, with Allison Oger, Ms. Oger, and, and give her a, a heads up, 'cause I know she was super passionate about it, and she gave a great presentation, so it'd be good for her to know that that's moving forward. And she might even wanna, you know, engage and participate as well, so, thank you, that's great news. All right, so back to the original topic, that was kind of a, a side topic that I just brought up. Is there any discussion on the, the tree bid for the baseball softball complex? All right, seeing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the tree bid for quilted gardens and nursery for the baseball softball complex.
I, I, is this, is this the whole thing? So, it's both the, for Skinski Lawn and the Quilts Garden Nursery? Or is it or?
It, it's either or, there's two quotes there. Fifty-six-hundred dollar difference between the two. Richenovski?
Rickonovski.
Rickonovski, sure. Is, is one more tree than quilted gardens, but it's a fifty-six-hundred dollar difference there, so.
I, yeah, and I apologize, I know you have a motion on the table, let me ask a, a question. I, I didn't realize it's either or. What are you recommending? And I assume it's, you know, what it.
Yeah, the recommendation is quilted gardens.
Okay, all right. All right, so we have a motion on the table to approve the quilted garden nursery quote. Do I have a second?
I will second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the approval of the janitorial services contract for middle school. I had a question on this one, didn't we approve two contracts already, I thought? And this is the third? And was it elementary and high school, now we have?
So, yes, the Pristine is currently doing our elementary. So, the, just like hiring associates, we've lost custodial staff. And so, this would allow this company to come in and do our middle school wing. So, they're currently doing elementary, this would have them do the middle school wing. Within the contract, it states that we can end that contract any, anytime with thirty-day notice, right? So, we're gonna continue advertising for those positions. We get them hired, then we'll, we'll end this contract. But in order to alleviate some of that stress load that's on our, that's currently on our custodial staff, at least we can get them in now and try to get somebody, before we try to get somebody else hired. And the cost, I think, is that what you were just gonna share, April? I think the cost is pretty much a wash between hiring somebody and then hiring the company. But to me, it's more personal, if you have somebody on staff that's cleaning and taking that ownership. Not saying that they don't do a good job, they do a great job, but.
That makes sense, thank you very much for explaining that, so.
And this was addressed before, where we just switched companies. So, we didn't do both, but we ended the contract with one company and started with Pristine.
Thank you for that. Is there any discussion on the janitorial services contract for middle school?
And I'm assuming we're getting good service from Pristine? We're, we're getting good service currently from Pristine? No issues with the current contract?
No issues.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the janitorial service for the middle school to approve Pristine Management Solutions Contract.
It's been properly motioned to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next, we have approval of the head girls, I'm sorry, approval of the head girls wrestling cheer sponsor position. With this, stipend a 2.5% extracurricular on, on the base, so.
Do we currently not have the position approved?
Correct, there's no position currently, so this is just to create that position so that Brayton can get someone hired.
They've, with wrestling cheer, they tried to balance and do both with boys and girls, but now they are, for the most part, completely different seasons. And they're going and going, so it may be the same person, but it's different seasons. So, she's doing all for both, and it's been juggled, but this is making it a real position.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I think we all missed the girls part, that was in there, we were like, we didn't have a wrestling cheer coach? Okay, that makes sense.
Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve a head girls wrestling cheer sponsor position.
It's been properly moved, do I have a second?
I'll make a motion to second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Actually, moving on to the board policy updates, this will be the second reading of these policies out of a three reading total. So, this was, if you remember, to update our policies, to come in alignment with the new Iowa law regarding truancy that we had a fantastic spirited discussion about last time. And this is the second reading. Is there any discussion from my peers on this? So, I, I do wanna chime in, you know, I, I've had conversations with Chad on this, and I think I talked about this. There, there's two sides of this that I wrestle with. One, seventeen days, seventeen days a semester, right, is, is a lot of days. Like, no kid should be missing that much days, like, like I get it. I think the, the other half of this coin too is that there are certain things that are within the school, and we can decide whether or not, you know, to, to accept, you know, certain reasons for a, an excuse absence. And there are certain things we can't, this law says there's certain things we can't. And I think one of the things we're discussing, and it hasn't been really, you know, outlined out, at least on paper yet, you know, is, once they get to this eight-day mark, I think, or something, you know, where they're almost halfway there, there, there has to be a, a meeting and a contract with the parents. And as I understand it, which is probably a good thing, the, the county attorney wants to get engaged at that point, because I guess, once it gets to seventeen days, it's a little too late. Like, they're gonna have to go to court, and things are gonna happen. And, you know, as I sit down and think about, you know, if, if a student is a AB student, they're doing great, and their parent hasn't, happens to take them on a three- or four-day, you know, vacation trip or something, and then they get a sore throat and the parent doesn't take them in, all of a sudden, that parent with an AB student has the county attorney and the school, you know, sitting there talking, talking with them and drawing up a contract. And that, that really, that really bothers me, because I, you know, if the student is doing well, and, 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 you know, they happen to go on a three- or four-day family vacation, and then they had a, you know, sore throat for two days, and the parent didn't take them in the doctor's office, it, I, I just feel like there's gotta be, for me, a little bit more on the administrative implementation of these policies that could potentially account for and allow the school administration to make certain judgment-based decisions, right? And, and I, I get these policies, like, we have to approve them, I get them, but what I don't see yet is our administrative implementation of those. And I would like to, you know, for me, at least see administration on that box that's within the school to have some sort of, you know, that's how I can describe it, is operating in the gray, to allow you or the administrators to make certain decisions on, okay, we are gonna count this as an excused absence, you know, based on the totality, the facts, or, or whatever. And I recognize it's just my, my single, singular opinion on, on, on that, but it, I, I don't like, I don't like casting a yes vote for these policies, knowing, not knowing, I guess, you know, that scenario where an AB student and, and a good parent's all of a sudden gonna have the county attorney, you know, sitting in their living room, drawing up a contract. Like, that's just really scary, so. I, that's, that's kinda my two cents on it.
I, I don't know if we're able to, I think, playing off that, not even going on a vacation, but just, if you think about a kiddo that has a sore throat, right? And most parents, I know my rule, I usually wait till day three before we go to the doctor. Are we able to create a policy for like, if they keep them home for a day? You know, 'cause, and I know it won't get up to that eight days, but like, I, I know there's a current elementary mom whose kiddo just is not getting better, tried to send them, came back, and, and she's worried, she's like, I'm almost at the eight-day mark. You know, I, what's gonna happen? I'm like, you know, they take her to the doctor, but I just don't wanna see sick kids getting sent to school. And then poor, you know, Brandy and Angela have to filter through and send them home so that it's excused. And that's not on our school, like, that's a very poorly written policy on this attendance thing. It's, it's very frustrating, and I know we're, we're dealing with it, all the schools are dealing with it. I just didn't know, what great area do we have to address stuff like, if they are just homesick for the day, do I have to send my kiddo in to get sent home so it's excused? You know, you don't wanna be sending all the sick kiddos in, but I know some parents thinking that, is that my only option? And again, just kinda thinking out loud and playing off what, what you said, it could be a DF student, you know, regardless if they have, you know, a, a sick day, if it's just the one day, how it's, it's a really hard place for, for us to be in, and for, for you guys. But I just didn't know if that's something that we're even able to look at when the parameters of what the state passed.
So, there's a lot there. So, the hard part is, the state tells us that a family vacation is not exempt, right? So, that, that's, that's not a choice. The state also tells us that a funeral is not exempt, right? Which we can, we can agree or disagree with where they're at there. But, but I think, I think as, from a school standpoint, everybody's human, right? We all have situations and we all have circumstances. And I like to think that our administrative staff, our secretarial staff are understanding and good people. And I think that's where that communication is gonna come in really important. None of us want to involve an attorney. The attorney that'll come to those meetings, those truancy meetings, it's not any more enjoyable for us than it is for the parent, right? So, the sooner we can get in front of that, the better. The issue really is gonna stem from people that are taking vacations for eight, ten days. That's where it's gonna stem. It's, it's not gonna stem from kids that are, that are having illnesses for, you know, a week. We, we'll, we'll understand that. If your, if your kid's gone for a week because they're, they're sick, more than likely, you've taken them to the doctor at that point, right? So, just communicate that with the school. And I think, I can go back with our, with our administrative team, and we can make sure and clarify those things and, and put those things. That's not something that necessarily goes into a policy, a board policy, but it can certainly go into like our handbook, right? Our handbook, that type of thing. And we can clarify those things if needed. But I think the struggle for me is more on the stuff that we, we can't be flexible on, right? So, we're understanding it and working through those things, just like parents are right now, because it was pushed on us the day before school started. So, that's the difficult thing that us and every district around the state is going through right now, so.
And I appreciate the quick turnaround that you guys got this, and I'm not saying it's anything that we're doing. It's just, it's so frustrating to have your hands tied this way. I agree, like the vacation, 'cause we deal with oftentimes kids gone for a month, and how do you catch them up? And I agree, that's not acceptable. I'm more of the, what if they are just sick for a day or two, or how are we handling that? I know we had kinda discussed that before too, and I've reassured anyone that I've heard from that. I think within our school, we're, we are pretty, you know, close-knit, people-know-people communication, and we do have wonderful administrative staff that, that deal with the community constantly, that, hopeful that we, they, yeah, common sense and be able to work through those, those problems.
And I did tell Nathan too, the process for challenging an attendance, it's still in place, right? So, if you don't feel like an attendance, if a parent doesn't feel like an attendance is marked correctly, there's a process that they can follow, and that's in the handbook, that they can follow and go through that as well. So, that process doesn't leave just because the state dictates what we can and can't do sometimes. But, so that's still there.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on the board policy update. Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, that's right. I thought we have to approve it three times, okay, yeah, read it three times, okay. So, no action on that one. All right, next we have our upcoming dates, the next regular scheduled board meeting is October 28th, 2024. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
It's been properly motioned to adjourn, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. All those in favor, signified by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned.